Let's call this meeting to order. And, uh, okay. Motion to go into work session, be it resolved if the board of supervisors insist to. Work session for the purpose of discussing the following fiscal year end report.
Second.
Second. Would the manager please come to the row?
Sure.
I mean, and administrator?
Sure.
Well.
Supervisor Creed?
Yeah.
Supervisor Perkins?
Yes.
Supervisor Biggs?
Aye.
Supervisor Gabriel?
Aye.
Supervisor Tuck?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye. Before we get started, I'd like to make this observation that this is a work session and we're not taking public comment tonight.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, this evening we have a report for a summary of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013. The audit report is nearly complete. We'll have that shortly, I believe, but we have prepared a summary of information to discuss with you how we closed out the end of the fiscal year and to talk a little bit about some of the revenues that we still have on hand that we might can use for some upcoming projects. So at this point, I want to introduce Mark McGruder, our budget manager, to lead us off and then introduce the following speakers.
All right, so I'm gonna go over some of the fiscal year 13 revenue highlights, but before we get into that, I just want to give some background information so we know what we're talking about. Essentially, county revenue falls into two categories, and we've talked about this before. Undesignated revenue and designated. Really, the difference is whether or not that revenue is restricted or not restricted. The lion's share of the county's revenue is undesignedated, and it makes up about $92 million of about $106 million in revenue that we bring in. And then the designated piece makes up about $14 million. And the difference between that, again, is whether or not those revenues are restricted or unrestricted. In other words, your ability to use those funds for different purposes. So when we look at the total picture, total revenues, including both the undesignedated and designated portions, after we adjust for the windfall, exceeded estimates by .1 million for 0.08 percent of the total general fund budget. The designated portion were actually less than the estimates due to timing differences, and we were actually in the hole of $1.4 million. That doesn't mean that we're not going to receive that revenue. It's two things that are going on there. One is there's sometimes a lag in time between when revenues are actually received and, you know, when they were due to us. And also, there's timing differences that affect that. So it doesn't necessarily mean we're not going to get that revenue, it's just we didn't receive it by the end of fiscal year. The undesignedated revenue portion, after we adjust for the windfall, exceeded estimates by 1.5 million. That's 1.6 percent of the total undesignedated general fund budget. And the reasons for those additional revenues were an increase in motor vehicle valuation on personal property book, that was .4 million, delinquent property tax collections, .3 million, sales and use tax collections over the estimates, .2 million, prepaid taxes, which is .4 million, and other miscellaneous collections at .2 million. In reality, the, of that total amount, the prepaid taxes, almost a half a million dollars, those are revenues we're actually getting ahead of schedule. And so if you had taken that out of the equation, it would have been 1.1 million. This chart here shows the fiscal year 13 revenue collections versus the estimates by individual category. And again, the actual revenue that is collected has a windfall now in there. I'm gonna talk a little bit about that windfall. As we've talked in the past, the windfall is additional revenue collected on the second real estate payment due to a tax rate increase. And the reason that it's a windfall is because we don't know whether or not you're going to increase taxes on that second payment, and so we don't budget for that increase. And obviously, when that increase comes in, it becomes a windfall because we don't budget for it. The windfall is not in the estimate, so therefore, for comparison purposes, we need to pull the windfall dollar amount out of the actual collection so that we can compare what a revenue would have been had we not had that increase in tax rate. And as you can see on this chart, we exceeded the estimates in total by $85,000 after we adjust for the windfall. We were within less than 1 percent of the total estimate. Talk a little bit about the conclusions regarding the fiscal year 13 collections. Again, the increases in motor vehicle, delinquent, sales tax, and prepaid taxes allowed us to exceed the undesignedated portion of our estimates. These increases were known when we were developing the fiscal year 14 budget, which allowed us to utilize the projected revenue in fiscal year 14. Again, the designated revenue shortfall is tied to expenditures that were not needed due to program savings, or it was due to a lag in when we actually received the funds versus when we should have received them. And again, grant funds were delayed due to timing issues. Now, I want to talk a little bit about our revenue picture going forward. And one of the things that, you know, gets confusing is that every year, we're actually dealing with three separate budget years. We're closing out fiscal year 13. We're actually in fiscal year 14 as we speak, and I'm trying to project what's going to happen in fiscal year 15. And so I want to talk a little bit about that because based on what information we received kind of tells us what's going to happen, or what we think is going to happen throughout the course of the fiscal year. So I want to go back to fiscal year 14, which is the year that we're currently in. With no tax rate increase, we had estimated that we would have $2.8 million in undesignedated revenue growth. The 1.5 million that I just showed you that we were over the estimates in fiscal year 13 was actually in that number. So the $1.5 million in growth that we just talked about in fiscal year 13 has already been appropriated and is in fiscal year 14. It's not new money. And so that's not going to be available to you to spend in fiscal year 15. So what happens is in September of each year, when we get the personal property book, I have an idea of what's going on, at least as far as the book goes, and then I track that throughout the course of the year to see how well we do. So last year, when I got the personal property book, I knew that we were going to have a little excess revenue towards the end of the year, which allowed us to then budget that in fiscal year 14. And then when the book came out and it was realized, we knew that was there. Same thing now. The personal property book just came out, so I have an idea of how well we're doing in the current year based on what's on that book because that book is going to drive how much revenue we bring in in the current year. So I have an idea of what's going to happen. Now, things are going to happen. There's going to be supplements, there's going to be abatements to the book, and throughout the course of the year, that will give you better information as to where you're headed in the current year. So when I talk about what happened in '13, note that we've already projected that into what's going on in '14. And what's going on in '14 right now, I'm seeing, and I'm going to project that stuff into what's going to happen in fiscal year 15. So back to '14, which is current year, we increased the tax rate 10 cents on personal property, 2 cents on real estate, and that added an additional $2 million. So with the 2.8 million that we had in projected growth in '14, plus the additional $2 million, we have $4.8 million that we could use to balance the operating budgets and to address the capital needs that we had in last year's, or the current year's fiscal year 14 budget. So the fiscal year 15 projections will not be complete until December. Again, the book just came out in September. It gives me an idea of what the picture's going to look like, but I don't really know what's going on until I start to see actual collections come in in December. And it won't be till the latter part of December, I'll have a better idea of how well that book is representing what's really going on. Of course, supplements and abatements are going to occur throughout the year. Again, that's going to give me more information. One thing that I do know at this point is the personal property book value came in less than what we had anticipated for fiscal year 14. And that number drives how much revenue we are going to pick up in fiscal year 14. Motor vehicle valuation was down $32 million, lower than what we had anticipated, which means right off the top, that's $800,000 that we're not going to receive if that book turns out to be exactly the way it is at this point. I also know about a $2.8 million abatement to merchants' capital, which is going to also drop that by $100,000. Now, on the flip side, there are several other categories in which we actually exceeded where I expected us to be, in business furniture and fixtures, and a few other categories. And that's going to help offset that shortfall. But what I know at this point, based on what the book is and what I think is going to happen in December, is that things are much tighter this year, meaning how much money we're going to bring in this year and what I'm going to be able to project from for fiscal year 14 than where we were last year at this time. So as additional details come out, I'll have a better idea. What I know at this point is that I'm expecting us not to make our full projections in the current year. Now, by how much, I don't know at this point, but, you know, last year, I knew that we were going to have about a million dollars over and above where the estimates were, which allowed us for some growth. I'm hoping that we're going to actually hit our estimates right on the money, which means that any growth that we get is not going to be as deep as what it was last year when we were doing the projections. And again, I'll know more information, and, you know, when I do the preliminary revenue estimates for you in January, I'll have a better idea because I'll have the December collections to compare back to the book value to see how things are actually panning out. So at that point, I'm going to turn it over to Angie. I'm available to answer any questions.
I was gonna say, before we move on to Angie, are there any questions about where we've been, where we are, and where we think we're going as far as revenues go? Anything you'd like to ask, Mark? Well, don't run too far away. Thanks.
Mark mentioned all the different years that we talked about, and I'm working on the 13 audits, so in my mind, that is the current year. Mark's got all these different years going on. So sometimes it causes a little confusion when we're trying to figure out which page we're exactly on. And the part of the presentation I'm going to go over with you now is how we finished the year. And as Craig said, thought, it is not complete. The auditors are here, not at this very moment, but they are here this week and were here last week, so we should have that wrapped up by the end of November when it's due to the state. The chart that's in front of you now is the cumulative change in cash. We use this to figure out what our cash flow needs are. There are several different ways to do that, and different organizations do it different ways. We actually look at the historical trend and see what our low point in cash has been over the past few years. And as you can see at the far left-hand side of this chart, in April of '11, our low point in cash was $21.2 million. It hasn't been that low since then. Part of that is because we did have a windfall, which helped the cash flow level out somewhat, but we wanted to still include this $21.2 million at this point so that we can make sure that we do have enough cash flow reserve to cover all the expenses as they come due. This chart is familiar to you too, I think. We've seen this for several years. And this starts with our cash balance as of the end of the year, which was $40.5 million. And then as we go across the page, we back out things that we've already spent or things that we need to hold in order to maintain our financial position. And the financial health of the county really depends on several different factors. One of them is that we can balance the budget with our current revenues, that we don't have to use fund balance to balance our budget. Another important factor in this is that we have enough money in contingencies to cover emergencies, just like you have in your home, that you have, if an emergency comes up, you're able to take care of that. The last one is the cash flow reserve, which I mentioned already. And as I said, there are different ways to do this. We look at the historical trend to see what our low point in cash has been. This number is actually a little less than two months of our expenditures, and a lot of jurisdictions and other localities look at about two months of expenditures to see what is an adequate cash flow reserve. So this is a little bit lower than that, but we don't feel like it needs to be higher because we have looked at our historical information. The next box, $5.977 million, is the amount that we have actually brought before the board and the board has acted on since the end of June to spend out of fund balance. Some of those things are purchase orders and funds from the schools that were remaining at the end of the year that needed to be carried over. As Mark said, sometimes the timing of our transactions don't correspond to the fiscal year, and we need to carry some things over. I won't go through every line of this, but if you have any questions about the specific items listed, we can go over those. Again, it has purchase orders, road money, the V-Doc road money that we have set aside, some other rollovers, and funds for the schools that have been carried forward. It also includes the $700,000 for the future capital for the school. That was generated from this year's windfall of 1 penny on the tax rate. The next box is our designated reserves. We have capital reserve, landfill reserve, and so forth, and we present these to you every year as well. Some of these were increased last year with the windfall. We used some of the funds from the windfall last year to increase some of these and to add the animal shelter reserve. Then that brings you to the final box at the top of the sheet, which shows our ending cash position. After we back out all of those other things, we end up with a little over $7 million. At the end of June last year, we had almost $4 million, so that's about a $3 million increase. And if you look at the box below that, it shows that that's made up of various different factors. One of those is the $1.5 million that Mark spoke of earlier in revenue that was collected over the estimate. Now, that was built into the next year budget, so that's not going to be there again. It's just this one time that that's occurred. We also had the revenue stabilization fund last year, the $500,000 that we had included in the budget that did not need to be spent. That's not in the '14 budget either, so that is also a one-time item. We have contingencies in our budget every year, which sometimes it's a little confusion about a contingency versus a reserve. Contingencies are budgeted every year, and they are 1 percent of the general fund budget. That's in accordance with our financial policies. That's for our smaller emergencies or needs that come up in the year, we can use money from the contingencies. This year, we had $315,000 of contingencies remaining at the end of June. So again, that's a one-time item. And then various departmental funds, if we look through those to see who had not spent all of their money and didn't ask for carryovers, and that was about $800,000 for that. So that accounts for the increase from June of '12 to June of '13. And sometimes at this point, we have an estimate for county carryovers in these funds. We have not estimated any county carryovers at this point for this purpose. Now, I'll turn it over to Carol. She's going to take over the next slide.
We'll do the grand finale here at the end. Because we do have an amount of money left over, a significant amount, because we do have adequate, what we believe to be adequate, resources in place, the staff is recommending that we allocate some of this unallocated funds remaining at year end to capital. We looked at different ways of how to allocate it and what might be a method for going about that. So what we came up with was $5 million out of your total remaining at year end, $3 million to school capital, and $2 million to county capital. Now, the numbers that you see under the $3 million to school capital looks at the current year and the fact that you've earmarked 2 cents on the real estate rate for future school capital projects. So in the current year, that will put $1.4 million into the school capital fund. You've also taken the windfall on that amount, which was $700,000, and you've already allocated that or appropriated that into the school capital fund. So presently, you have $2.1 million added in the current year for school capital for future school projects. For some reason, this keeps going in and out. Maybe if I stand further back.
Talk over it.
Talk over it, okay. If you add, if you followed our recommendation and added $3 million, in the current year, you would have added $5.1 million to school capital projects for future school capital. Okay, let's remember or review a little bit about how capital funds work. These monies are appropriated into each respective fund, whether it's school capital or county capital. The funds remain there until there's a project, and when there is a project, that is brought before the board and a request is made to allocate those funds and transfer them to a specific project. So as you put monies in here, they would not be available for expenditure until it comes back to you and is approved to have those funds used for a specific project. It works the same way for county capital projects, too. So our recommendation would be to use some of this money that's left over at year end by allocating it to capital projects, in the amount of $3 million to the school capital fund, $2 million to the county capital fund. Again, that's just our recommendation, and it's certainly up to you as if you decide to do that or make different amounts of allocations. And that's all we have at this point. I'll turn it back over to you, Craig.
Carol, if you want to, can you back up the slide, one slide to the... I just want to make sure everybody under... oop.
Oh, good. Okay, no, I can't turn it back.
Well, back on slide nine, in the last, while you're looking for it, I'll talk it through. In that last box on the right, we indicate there's about 7.1 million currently in unallocated funding that's left after we go through the cash reserve, the future encumbrance, or future expenditures, and the amount that's already reserved. So of that 7.1, staff's recommending that $5 million of that be set aside, $3 million for future school capital, and $2 million for future county capital. Did I say that correct?
Correct.
So that would still leave us about 2.1 million if the board decides later to designate whatever you may want to designate for other uses. But we feel like, we had quite a bit of discussion on this, but because we finished the last two years in relatively strong position and knowing that we increased taxes 2 cents this past year for future school capital needs, staff felt that of that 7.1 million, we should look at setting a portion of that aside for future school capital and then additional funds for future county capital, just to hopefully weather anything that may be coming at us down the road. But at that point, that's just a recommendation. It's certainly not, I mean, the board would have to vote on that at a later meeting to do that. But at this point, we'll open it up to any questions you may have about this page or any other page that you've heard information on this evening.
Mr. Chair? Can I just, sorry, I just had a quick question, just a clarification question. If we were to allocate some monies into county capital, for example, and that, those can be for any capital project related to, so for example, like the animal shelter, thinking that money could supplement the existing reserve?
Yes.
If it were, that project were to go forward? Okay, that would be fine. And just to offer, just to maybe start things, my thoughts are, I think this makes sense to use this money into, especially given our positive historical balance that you can see kind of on the far bottom right there, to allocate this money into capital. We might want to think about the amount, though, and one of the reasons that I say that is because I was looking at the school board agenda and school board's meeting tomorrow, and they're going to ask us for supplementary money for security improvements on all the schools there, and I think the estimate is about $388,000, near $400,000. So that's going to come before us soon. I assume that will pass, and the letter will come to us after the meeting tomorrow, so... Yeah, they meet every election day.
I was just going to ask the same thing because I knew about the school's security because I know they've been, you know, going around to the different schools and doing different things and making recommendations, and we still have schools that you can walk right into. And I would assume that that will be stopped, hopefully.
Well, and of the, again, of the 7.1 million allocating, $5 million of it still leaves $2.1 million that you can take funds out of, or you can take some of the monies you've already reserved and use that if you so desire, if the school board comes forward with something that the majority of the board wants to support.
So as we go forward with the animal shelter, too, like, would that be monies that could be available if we wanted to supplement what we've already put in?
Yes, ma'am, if the board delucks to do that. We also have, I can tell you from discussions with staff, we've got a couple of other issues that are going to be coming before us in the next year or so. One is the juvenile detention home, and it's going to require some upgrades. I'm not really sure what our portion of that's going to be, but that's going to be probably a multimillion-dollar project that'll be shared among multiple jurisdictions. We had a conversation at the last fire and rescue commission meeting about some of the continuing concerns in the Reiner district about space. The Reiner volunteer rescue squad is already busting at the seams in their facility, so there's going to be some discussion that the board will have to entertain on probably future fire and rescue needs in the Reiner area. So there's going to be plenty of opportunities to use these funds for various things, but over the years, I've learned you're much better off to go ahead and try to reserve things and hold them for the future than to let that just be spent for other purposes before you get there.
Is stormwater management's going, is that going to cost the county anything?
Oh, yes. Stormwater, stormwater's going to be fairly expensive. The challenge with stormwater is that's going to be an ongoing expense. It's not going to be a one-time thing. So we're going to have to be looking at revenue streams that'll support that on an ongoing basis as opposed to using one-time money to shore that up. So that's a whole separate challenge.
And I think, Craig, somewhere down the road, I don't know how quickly down the road that it will come, but I'm sure that the Blacksburg Rescue Squad will ask us for some money to assist them with building their...
Oh, yeah, so I apologize for leaving that out. Blacksburg's looking at any facility as well. Yes, sir. So there's plenty of, plenty of options for these funds.
Craig, for something like the Reiner, the Blacksburg Rescue Squad, would that fall under county capital?
Yes, sir, yes. Yes, sir.
What happened in the Reiner situation, they had 17, Matt, they had 17 members, and now they're up to about 54. They're like sorties packed in that facility out there.
Do they have a limit on how many they can hang?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to it neither, but what happened, they have enough volunteers to have volunteers around the clock to be there in the station to really...
Wonderful. I just wondered when we get to the top.
Reduce the response time out there.
Are there any questions that we can answer? And I know in the past, when we've presented this, sometimes when you go away, you think of other things, and we'll certainly be available to provide additional information later on if you have questions. We have had, we've had two good years. Been very pleased with our leadership team and the way they've managed their budgets, but we know that with the continuing challenges we face from Washington and Richmond, it's going to continue to be a challenge to bring in, to be able to build reserves year over year.
I do like staff recommendations in adding $3 million of the reserves to the future school capital because, when you look at $21 million... school capital because, can you look at 21 million starting out, if you didn't have that 3, it'd be a long time before we could have enough money to really, you know, make a difference on some major school renovations or building new schools or whatever. So, that will help grow that fund much faster.
Thank you. That's what we were thinking, too.
This is something to think about for a while.
Yeah.
Now, is this something that, that we would want to talk about at the next meeting or perhaps at the following meeting or something like that in order to allocate, I mean...
That's the board's pleasure. We can, we can have a proposed resolution on the next board agenda to designate 5 million, 3 million for school capital reserve, and 2 million for county capital reserve. If, we can have that on the agenda for a discussion and vote if that's something the board like, would like for us to prepare and have for your consideration.
How would it be listed, like, you know, like, we have all these, like, little things under all these reserve things, like, like, does the capital for the county go into, how is it, like, how do we know where it goes?
What will happen in that previous box, supervisor bigs, where it's 6.299 now, that number will increase to 11, 299, and the reserves will show in that box.
We're actually going to appropriate it. So, it would be over here under the expenditure side, you just need to move over one box because what we're recommending is that you take action to actually put it in those funds. Again, before you used it for a project, it would have to come back to you unless, say, the animal shelter was one of them. You would, and you decided you want to do that project, and you would use your million dollars in reserve over here, so it would come back to appropriate that money. That money is not yet appropriated, it's just set aside for that purpose. And let's say you wanted to use the 2 million dollars for the animal shelter for a total of 3 million. 1 million would be appropriated because it's currently in reserve, and 2 million, if you already allocated 2 million for it, would just be transferred to that project. The same thing with schools. Any money in the school capital fund over here, the 1.4 million, the 700,000, or the 3 million, it sits in the fund at that amount, but would need to be transferred to a project. If you have the schools come before you with a project, that would be transferred. So, the difference in this recommendation is that it actually be appropriated into those two funds, not just set aside in reserve.
So, one's going to be called the school capital fund and one's going to be called the county capital fund?
We already have those funds in place, you're just adding to them. Those funds are in place already.
Where are they on here?
The name of the funds are in place, school capital fund, county capital fund.
But is there any money in them?
Your bond monies go in there when you issue bonds.
So, like, is there money in there now before you put this money in it?
What do we have in, in schools? Huh? We'd have, we'll have to get the exact amounts in there.
And so, there, so there's already a fund set up called school, um, school capital fund. We'd find out the amount, but, and then if the board decides they can put the other amount in with that amount, is that what you're saying? And the same for the county capital fund, so then we would see how much money is in both funds when we do...
Yeah, but the difference, one of them is the only thing you're going to have available are your existing bond monies in your school capital fund, I believe.
Yeah, so, if I'm understanding you right, Carol, what you're saying is that in school capital fund, there's money in there, but it's, it's exclusively bond money, so effectively it's spent.
Spent, right.
So, there's, there's not, there's nothing in there right now, and when we allocate that amount that's on that slide right there, then we will basically have 5.1 million. Though if you looked at the fund, it would look like there was more money, but you would really only have the 5.1.
Yeah, it's about 1.1 million.
Because you've, you decided some time ago to borrow money for the school projects, so you're finishing out those capital projects. These are monies, and again, you set the 1.4 million for school, for future school projects, and those are undetermined at this point. So, what this would do is just put more money for future school projects, but those projects are undetermined at this point because you don't know what the schools will bring forward.
What about the 2 million for the county? You said there's a capital reserve already for that?
There, well, we...
Would it work the same way?
The difference being is we're just going to appropriate that in there, not reserve it. And I know it gets confusing, but I think the difference is, is that in your capital reserve over here, if you look at the top line, 1.35 million, you're just setting monies aside in case, in case some kind of capital issues, and you've done it before, I think school pipes blew up one time, some other things have happened, and those are available for appropriation. The same thing with facilities reserve, in case there's a maintenance issue or something comes up, then there's a reserve, some things designated for that purpose to go to. In terms of your capital fund, you're looking at larger, major projects than what you're doing, and like your school projects, those are major capital projects. They're not just smaller types projects that maybe maintenance or things that you would take out of your reserve funds. The thing that's probably the most confusing would be the animal shelter, and that was just set in reserve because no decision had been made for that to be an, a capital project in with the total amount of funds. So, what we're saying is to take the funds that are available, put them into your existing capital funds for future capital projects, those being larger capital types of projects such as a school or the animal shelter or a fire station or some of the large ones.
What about the county? I was asking about the county capital fund. You know, you said there would be more money in the school fund, but it would already be spent. Do we have that same kind of situation for the cap, for the county?
We have, yes, we have.
And how much is, what, what's in that one?
We'll have to get those numbers for you.
But, I mean, what goes into that normally?
Courthouse, public safety building, that's all that's coming up, yeah.
They're all bond monies, too?
Mm-hmm. Right, the one cent you set aside for fire and rescue equipment, we put that in the capital fund, so it'll be separate. So, you have the 700,000 into fire and rescue capital, and again, we'll have to get you the total numbers and the balances, but in general, they're the major projects of the courthouse and the public safety building. On the school side, you've got your three major school projects. Finishing out Blacksburg High School, I don't know if they've closed those accounts yet, Auburn Middle and Auburn High School.
Okay, I just wanted to understand, so there's really a lot more money in these things, but it's not for spending, it's already spent?
Well, the, that's what I was just making a note of. The money that's in the bond account is just that. It's, when we go out and borrow money, it's based on the expected cost of projects. So, that bond money is obligated for schools. Now, what happens sometimes is when those projects are completed, we actually wind up with some leftover bond money.
Right, that's what I thought.
But the, but that money can only be used for additional capital. You can't use that bond money for anything other than capital.
Oh, I know you can't, but I just wanted to know what was in there.
I can tell you what's in those accounts. I'm going to start with the schools.
Okay.
So, in the school capital projects fund, that million four of the 2 cents that were set aside from the 14 budget, that's been put in that fund. And the 700,000 that I think you took action on at the last meeting or the meeting before, that's in that fund as well. And then...
So, the first two...
Right. There are also balances, there's still a balance in the Prices Fork Elementary School that's about 800,000. I don't know if there's still some things hanging out there that they need to pay on that or not. Sometimes, you know, after school's finished, they have continued, or retainage issues, making sure that the project is like they want it to be. There's still about 4 million in the Blacksburg High School fund.
But I know, yeah, I know on Blacksburg and Auburn both, they've still got a couple of pay requests to close that.
How much, 4 million?
Yes. In Auburn Middle, there's 18.7 million.
And we can send you all this if you don't want to have to write it down.
Well, I was just thinking, in the Auburn, does that include the money for the refurbishing of the old building to make it...
That's what it is, that number is just for that, and then there's 5 million for the high, for Auburn High School still left.
But we should not be counting any of that money because it's...
No, it's bond money.
Right.
It can't be spent for anything except school capital, right.
So, but it's there available for school capital?
Well, they're, well, they're, they're, those monies are actually more than available, they're committed.
Right.
The, the, the funds for each of the projects Angie named, those funds are committed to pay the remaining pay requests on those school projects.
So, why wouldn't you have a separate, I mean, I, I don't know. I guess I would like to see it like, why isn't there just a bond account?
That's what it is.
And then if you had the leftover stuff from the bonds, then you could transfer it into a school capital fund.
And, and that's exactly...
I mean, to me, that makes more sense because it's too confusing to throw everything in one pot. You're going to have to list it separately anyway so people can understand it.
And we do account for it within that one fund. It's probably just that we call things different things, but in that fund for school capital, we want to be able to pay for the project. The whole Blacksburg, Blacksburg High School project, for example, could have funding sources from different places, which it did. It had different kinds of bonds. The county could have just put some money of its own into that. So, we need to be able to count for that in one place, but we do break down where that money is coming from so I can show you this money came from these bonds, and this came from this bond, and this came from county general fund that was transferred into the, into that place.
But another key distinction is, Carol, if you'll go back one slide again to Slide 9, the funds that we're talking about on this page are funds that are generated through the county's general fund. Is that the correct statement?
Yes.
This is the general fund. There is a separate account, as Angie has mentioned, for bond funds, which is when we borrow money for school capital projects. That's a totally separate group of money than the general fund.
See, that's what's happening here.
So, what happens is, is we talked about the funds that are currently in those bond fund accounts, as those pay requests come in to finalize the Auburn project, to finalize the Blacksburg project, to finalize Prices Fork, they, in all likelihood, there will be some money left when those projects are all paid for because hopefully we borrowed enough money to cover what the ultimate costs of those projects are, and I'm just going to make a number up, but let's say at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, there's a million and a half dollars left from all those projects. That million and a half dollars that'll be left in that bond fund, you then will have the decision, I mean, it's, it has to be spent for school capital. You can't just pull it out and put it in your budget. But that's another million and a half dollars that you'll have available for future school capital.
And then you could put that in the school capital fund.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it would be...
It has to be used, right. But we don't include that on this page, again, because this is simply money that's generated through the general fund. These aren't borrowed funds, these aren't funds that are committed to, that are already committed to major capital projects. That's, that's, I just want to make sure we understand.
The reason we don't generally talk about every single amount of, or line item in the school capital fund is just for that reason. They're all bonds, and there'll have to be a reckoning when these projects are over, and the schools will come, as they usually do, and say, we ended these projects, everything's done, and we have the balance of this money left over. Generally, they make a request to you all then to transfer it to a different capital project at some point.
Can it be used for debt service?
You can...
I don't, it would depend on the bonds if they allow it. I think they probably can use it for debt service if they want to, or if you decide that's where you want to spend it. But at this point, we normally have not had as many capital projects in schools as we have had recently with these three, so you usually could, you know, count on your one hand how much you got left over in the project, and it's usually because they put money in for demolition and you didn't demolish the building, or it didn't cost as much or something like that, and you come to the end reckoning. I think that happened with the two elementary schools at one point. The schools came back and said, or the two middle schools, I do remember, came back and said, we had this money left over, and asked for it to be allocated to the next capital project. But we're not to that point yet.
What about the public-private partnership deal we entered into where any leftover funds might be shared with the construction companies or the architectural companies or...
I think that might be a question for the schools, maybe at your upcoming meeting with them, because I don't know anything about the end product.
But how, how does it impact, for instance, when you're talking about what's left over, does that in any way affect us because so much money was to go to them, wasn't it?
Well, it was...
Wasn't it to be divided? We had two or three different ways of dividing it?
I don't know the specific answer for that. All I know is that any money we borrowed, if it returns back to us in some form or fashion, has to be used for future school capital. That's a covenant of the bonds when we borrowed it.
I don't know, but I thought in the agreement, am I wrong, Marty? Wasn't there some kind of graduation that if there was so much money left, the construction company would get a percentage?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I know they had like a, I mean, a, a general number that was the top of the line, and I think if it got underneath that, there may have been some savings that they both shared, and I'm not sure. But like Carol said, we can get that from...
So, we're talking about then just left over after all those things are taken...
Right, absolutely, and that's, right, and we're not to that point in any of the three of those projects. So, you know, we can certainly give you all the numbers here that show how much has been spent, but that's not going to tell you a whole lot until everything's said and done and all the checks have been read.
Chris?
Well, we just get another accounting, right?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, Chris.
Just a, a quick question. If we were just to put it, another line down here and put school capital fund in the reserves, that would equate to the same thing, would it not, I mean, I know that we're designated putting it in a fund, but whether we're putting it in something that's called school capital fund or school reserve funds, it's, it, it's all, it's just a matter of semantics, or is there something accounting principle that I'm missing, or is there something, a reason to be putting it into a capital fund versus a reserve?
Well, I can...
And I guess that's what I'm...
I can try to answer that. I, I think staff's recommendation on this 7.1 million and allocating 5 million is, when we talk about allocating it for capital funds, what we're saying is we don't feel that you should allocate any of that money for operating issues. When we call it capital money, that's setting it aside for bricks and mortar construction. You know, you, you have, you are certainly within your right to allocate that money for operating expenses if you chose to do so, but the, the big problem when you do that is you're putting one-time money to plug an operating hole that's just going to open right back up in the following year.
That, that would, I'm not looking to use this money for operating funds. I'm looking at, to say, all right, if we added, below animal shelter, we put school capital, uh, reserve instead of school capital fund, so we can look and see when this pulls up the next time that there'll be 3 million in that, that, that fund. And then there'll be a, I, I was just thinking, we would put this 2 million into the capital reserve, and that way we know what the, the funds are, it's easy, but if there's an accounting reason for it, you know, sometimes I know there might be, that we're putting it in the word, using the word fund rather than in our reserve, or animal shelter, it doesn't have the word reserve for it, but we voted, and that was what was done.
So, I think another way to put, I think you're saying, I have the same question, why appropriate this into a capital fund and not just reserve when you got to come back anyway to designate the money?
Right, and pull it out.
What's the difference?
Well, for one thing, it automatically re-appropriates, it automatically comes back to you for re-appropriation if it's already in the capital funds. I guess the other piece is, we've already got 1.4 million and 2 cents going into the capital fund for school capital projects. We appropriate the 700,000. It seems logical you would put all of your funds in the same place. If you want to hold the county, any money to the county out in the capital reserve, you could do that as well if you'd rather do that.
If we put it in the fund, and let's say that something catastrophic happens, let's, I mean, I was trying to be, on the county side, but we really have to address on the county, we could still vote to take the, all these monies that we're talking about, pull them out... We could still vote to take the, all these monies that we're talking about, pull them out and say, "Okay, we've gotta address this issue." There's not, once we commit it to being a fund...
You can uncommit it.
We can uncommit it.
You can uncommit.
That's, then, from my perspective, what is easiest for the accountant and the staff?
Right. I'm not the accountant, and I'm gonna look at the accountant. The accountant is going to come.
Once it's appropriated, the schools to use on projects, you cannot uncommit it.
Right, right.
Right. But if we just have our own fund for School Capital Fund...
On our side of the ledger.
Right.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, if we keep it, okay.
If you appropriate the money into the fund, either the 3 million, or the 2 million, or the total 5 million dollars, instead of just having it in the reserve, it's gonna actually move the cash to a different place. So, the beginning number on this sheet that is 40.5 million dollars would then be 35.5 if you moved it all there. It's a more formal movement of the cash. It's actually moving the cash, and if it's in a reserve, the cash is still there in the General Fund. But you could move the county money back, I guess if Marty says you can't move the school money back. But it would still not be allocated to a specific project.
You can move, you can move the school money back until such time as you appropriate it to the schools for a project. And then, you can't...
Correct. Yeah, once you appropriate to them, you can't get it back until the end of the year.
Reverts at the end of the project, right.
But if we move the money over there, especially for the schools, because we will be adding the 1.4 million dollars going forward, that would definitely be easier to keep up with and know exactly how much we have, because it'll all be in one place. It will be easier from an accounting perspective to have it all in one place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary has a question, don't he? I have another one when he finishes.
Yeah, I just, one question. Who pays for the land?
Which land?
Blacksburg High School.
That was a long time ago.
Did we buy the land, or did the schools buy the land?
Oh, we bought the land.
We bought.
We bought the land.
Just one of her papers, huh?
Well, it's like we pay for all the land, right? All over the county for the schools?
Well, usually it's charged by, you know, store, has been in past years. On this one, I guess this falls under the after 90 thing, where the schools don't necessarily get the land back once it runs out anymore.
They, they do get the land, don't they? They get everything until they surplus it to us. But we own it. Everything we've built since, what, Falling Branch?
Uh, no, I think Kipps, maybe?
Yeah, everything we've built since Falling Branch, we own.
I think it's Kipps. I'm not sure about Falling.
Oh, Kipps, could be Kipps.
We own the land, but you're right. Statutorily, the school board's in charge of the land. They're in control of it. They maintain it, they ensure, they're in charge of all of that, but we own it in fee.
And we have the deed to it, but once you were built before, the schools had deeds, had the deed to it, as I understood it.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's how all the ones we're dealing with right now.
My question was just to know what a true read on how much the schools cost.
How much what?
Right now, we don't know.
How much the schools cost, doesn't it?
How much the schools cost.
Yes.
That's part of the reason that we have the fund that I was talking about earlier, because we do account for that in the same place. But then, we show that the county paid for that part of the land, so that we can tell you how much the total cost, including the land, is. So, that's part of what Ms. Biggs was talking about, about how the fund works. That's so we can account for it all in one place in case people do want to know later.
Other questions?
One, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
The, in the block underneath the 6,299, where it says the Capital Reserve and Facilities Reserve, those can be used for either schools or the county? There's no designation there whatsoever?
No.
But what I'm understanding, if we put this 5.1 million in to a school, if we appropriate that, now, we cannot take that out. Is that right, Marty?
No, this is different, yeah. If we put that money into the School Operating Fund, then, yeah, you're right, we can't take it back until the end of the year, then it reverts back. But the capital fund is not on the county's school side. It's on the county's side. If you remember, the county's paying for all the debt service. The schools do not pay the debt service.
Okay. That's what I know. We are. And what, we took all that debt service money back out of the schools, or is part of it still in there?
It's in a totally independent fund, debt service fund.
On the county's side, though.
Yeah, well, it's in the total budget. We took it from, it used to be a part of the School Operating Fund.
Right, right, because I remember that.
To get it out of operating in schools and put it all in one fund, county and schools. It's accounted for separately, so you can show schools and county, but it's in one fund, debt service.
And the money for the debt service comes out of what we have? Our budget doesn't come out, school board budget?
No, it doesn't come out.
No, it's appropriated out of our budget.
Okay, I just wanna be sure, because I thought that's what we had done for a long time when I was on the school board. We had to have it as part of the school budget and not part of the county budget.
But if you approve a project for them to use the money, then you can't pull it back.
Right. So, if we have a motion that says we wanna put 5.1 million in, is there backing up what Chris said? Can we take it out?
Yes, ma'am.
And use it for something else?
Yes, ma'am, you can, as long, yes, you can.
Yeah, you didn't take another action, so long it hadn't been committed to a specific...
Right.
All right, let's just be clear here.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
1.4 million is already in the School Capital.
Right, right.
Well, that was the...
Your 700,000 you appropriate in there, so right now...
They have to stay in there.
They, unless you just, you can transfer them out. They've not gone to a project. But they've been appropriated into that fund. They're just sort of sitting there, waiting for a project. It's sort of like saving it up, that you're saying, "We're saving this up for future school capital."
I understand that. All right, but what I'm seeing is, if we do something with another 3 million, and it becomes 5.1 million, we put it in that same fund, we can still take it out because it has not been designated for a project?
Certainly, if the majority of the board votes to do that, yes.
So, other than, we really, the 40 million that's over here is not a real, really good, this is all General Fund operating, but it's not a good total picture of the amounts of money that the county might have, right? If you put all the other monies. I don't know, somebody wrote us an email saying, you know, "You're $200 million in debt, and how can you possibly spend money that you don't, you know, you don't have," et cetera, et cetera.
The $40 million is the amount of money that you have in the General Fund that the board has discretion over to be able to allocate and use for various functions. There is additional money available in the bond funds, but those funds are all committed to capital construction projects. And you really don't have the discretion to do anything with those funds until those projects are complete. And if there are any remaining funds, then it comes back to the board to discuss what to do with those monies. But what Carol's tried to do in years past with this is, basically, this is the money the board has discretion over to be able to allocate for projects or reserves, or whatever you wanna do. Again, there is additional money, but it's in bond funds committed to projects. And you really can't tinker with that money while those projects are being done.
But the money that's in there, okay, and it's left over from different projects. Have we used that money? Have we ever designated that money for anything, or does it still just sit?
No, matter of fact, when there was money left over from the Eastmont Elementary School project, and a little bit that I think we anticipated that was gonna be from the Prices Fork project, even though I think there's, and we used some of that as part of the equation when we went out to borrow money for the Auburn and Blacksburg projects.
So, you couldn't take any of that money, let's say, and use it for the animal shelter?
No, 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 no.
I think the bond specified has to go to School Capital.
Yeah.
That's in your bonded nature when you borrow it.
I wanna be sure. That's what we're saying, that we can use it for school.
Now, the money that you've borrowed, now, not to get it too muddy, but the money that you borrowed for the new courthouse construction project and the courthouse renovation, the old courthouse renovation for Public Safety Building, once though, you know, the courthouse project is almost closed out, the Public Safety Project hopefully will be closed out in the next 18 months to two years. Once all that's done, if there's any money left from the bond proceeds that was used to fund that, that can be used for other county capital projects.
So, it can be used for the animal shelter?
If the board ultimately decides to do that.
And if there's any left.
If there's any left over. I mean, you know, there may not be, but I'm just saying, whatever.
Yeah, we scraped the bottle on that one pretty tight.
Well, and that's a good example, too, because there were funds earmarked for the courthouse project, and those weren't, those not used is what provided the money for the Public Safety Building. And it was a transfer that this board agreed to, to move it to the other project, so that's...
And there may not be any money left over from Public Safety Building?
There may not be.
No, that was pretty tight.
I don't know if there is. You could use that for like the animal shelter if it were there.
Yes, ma'am.
The, yeah, the bonds are written as such. It says County Capital Projects. So, whatever a county capital project would be, schools are written specific to School Capital Projects.
And the 2 million that we would put, if we followed that, would just go again to, it could be used for any county project we wanted it to?
Yes, ma'am.
And again...
Or it just sits there?
It sits there till you tell them what's... Yes, ma'am.
But let me also just reiterate, this is just a recommendation. You know, it's up to you all if you wanna do it. If you don't wanna do it, you don't have to.
Okay. I think I understand it all.
Any other questions?
I like it real well, too.
Any other questions or comments?
It's after 7:00.
Well, you guys are getting away easy tonight. Thank you, staff and Mr. Mattis, for the information that you brought forward to us. And we will go out of work session.
So, move.
Well, would the county administrator call to borrow?
Supervisor Perkins?
Aye.
Supervisor Biggs?
Aye.
Supervisor Tuck?
Aye.
Supervisor Gabriel?
Aye.
Supervisor Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes, we're out of work.
Out of work session.